Quiet, please. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid hearing on a Committee on Finance. At this time, please silent all electronic devices. At no time, please do not approach the deans. If you have any question, please raise your hand and one of us, a sergeant at arms, will kindly assist you. Thank you for your kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, good morning and welcome to today's Finance Committee meeting. I'm Councilmember Justin Brannan. I have the privilege of chairing the Committee on Finance. We've been joined this morning with us in person is Councilman Carr and joining us remote on Zoom are Councilmembers Moya, Hanks, Stephens, Velasquez, and Brooks Powers. Also want to extend my condolences to Councilmember Moya on the passing of his father this week. Today, the committee is holding a hearing on Introduction 1070 sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, which would reinstate the biotechnology credit against the city's unincorporated business tax, general corporation tax, and corporate tax of 2015. I want to thank the finance staff for their hard work in preparation for this hearing, especially Deputy Director Emre Adev, Chief Economist Delara Demnaku, economists Hector Guerman and Andrew Wilbur, and my committee counsel, Mike Toomey. New York City's biotechnology credit was first created by state law and then enacted by the city council back in 2009. It was first authorized for a period of three years and then extended by state and council action until the state did not renew the credit and it lapsed in January of 2019. This year, the governor signed a renewal of the biotech credit for the council to reinstate. Biotech is a form of technology involved in the scientific manipulation of living organisms to create products conducive to improving the lives and health of plants, animals, and humans. This includes research on new drugs, medical devices, and diagnostic tests. The New York City biotechnology credit is a refundable credit of up to $250,000, which is available to small New York City-based biotech companies. The intent of the credit is to assist new startup firms that are researching new ideas and developing new products to foster a vibrant industry in New York City, both directly and in the kind of ancillary services that the industry needs. Biotech has become a growth industry in the city since the adoption of the tax credit over the last 10 years. The city has added more than 260 biotech research companies and built itself into the core of a region, leading the country in life science jobs and funding. While economic growth is and should be a central concern for the city at all times, tax credits are an expenditure that deserve review like any other agency spending. An effective economic tax break will actually change the behavior of the private sector in ways that stimulate stronger economic growth. On the other hand, a poorly executed tax break will leave no meaningful impact on a company's decision-making and end up a wasteful drain on city revenues and ultimately city taxpayers. At a time when the administration is projecting agency budget cuts of 15% going into next year's budget, the situation certainly demands the city's leadership be mindful of where and how we spend our resources. Tax breaks are no different. It's not about whether we think the goal is worthwhile or laudable or not, it's about making sure that the investment actually moves the ball forward and is achieving the goal. Today, we'll hear testimony from the administration about the impact of this biotech tax credit on the city. I look forward to discussing how we can objectively measure the effectiveness of this credit. With that, I'm going to turn things over to my counsel, Mike Toomey, to swear in our witnesses today.
Good morning. If you raise your right hands, please. Do you affirm that your testimony will be truthful to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief, and that you will respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Susan Rosenthal?
Yes, I do.
Zi Ying Lee?
Yes, I do.
Mikel Adgate?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, you may begin.
Good morning, Chair Brannan and members of the Finance Committee. Thank you for having us today. My name is Susan Rosenthal, and I serve as the Senior Vice President of Life Sciences and Healthcare for the New York City Economic Development Corporation. I'm joined by my colleague, Mikel Adgate, who serves as EDC's Senior Vice President of Government and Community Relations, and Zi Ying Lee, Senior Director of the Business Income Tax Research Unit at the New York City Department of Finance. We're happy to have the opportunity today to advocate for the passage of Introduction 1070, which would reinstate the New York City biotechnology tax credit. To ground our discussion of today's legislation, I'd like to quickly define biotechnology so that we can better understand how these industries impact our city. Very similar to what Councilmember Brannan said earlier, biotechnology, a term often used interchangeably with life sciences, is the study and use of living organisms for the purposes of innovation and new products that have applications in many different areas, including agriculture, health, security, manufacturing, energy, and the environment. Last year, Mayor Adams and Governor Hochul jointly released the Making New York Work for Everyone Action Plan, which aims to make New York City the best place to live and work. Of the 40 proposals intended to serve as a roadmap for the city's future, one of them specifically recognized the biotechnology industry as one of New York City's fastest-growing and most economically significant sectors. We're home to approximately 500 biotech companies located across all five boroughs. These companies employ our neighbors, offer internships for our young people, and provide vital job training. The industry also supports lifesaving medical interventions for our friends and family, operates community labs in our neighborhoods, and is constantly innovating to solve our city's most pressing challenges. It must also be noted that the biotech industry continues to play a critical role in the city's response to COVID-19, supporting the city's broad response for testing, treatment, and vaccination programs. The biotechnology industry will act as a barrier against future pandemics, developing new technology and products that will help keep the city and the world safe. The biotechnology sector in New York City has undergone tremendous growth in recent years, becoming one of the city's largest and top-performing industries. Let me run through some data regarding the economic impact of the industry. The biotech industry currently employs approximately 20,000 New Yorkers, and the city's goal is to double this number in the next 10 to 15 years. The life sciences are currently a $5.3 billion industry in New York. The city's goal is for the industry to create $82 billion in overall economic impact over the next 10 to 15 years. That number of biotechnology companies in New York City, it grew by 43.7% over the past five years, far outpacing the 5% growth in the number of companies in the broader New York City economy. Similarly, biotechnology employment grew by over 50% over the past five years compared to a 1.8% employment growth rate across the broader city economy. And the tremendous and intentional support of the growth of this industry has helped the New York City metro region become the largest life sciences economy in the country, ahead of metro areas such as San Francisco, Boston, and Los Angeles. EDC and the city have been intentional and bold in our investment in the biotech sector because we believe in the industry's high-growth potential, commitment to providing high-paying jobs, and contribution to an innovative and future-focused economy. This commitment is reflected in the city's more than $1 billion investment in the industry. A central focus of our work has been to create equitable access to an education and training pipeline for New Yorkers to access the good-paying jobs offered by the life sciences industry. Examples include the Life Sciences Internship Program, which has provided over 750 high-quality internships to students from across all five boroughs since 2017, over 70% of whom identify as members of communities of color, and 54% of whom were eligible for Pell or TAP grants. Another example is a $700,000 investment we recently made in BioBust to expand their work in the Bronx, providing hands-on K-12 STEM education. And third, the Science Park and Research Campus in Kips Bay, which I'll call Spark Kips Bay from now on, a joint effort between Governor Hochul and Mayor Adams, which will create a signature job and education innovation hub that will be the first of its kind in the state. These investments support job growth with diverse avenues of opportunity for New Yorkers. While many jobs in the biotech industry are tailored for graduates of New York City's higher education institutions, 2021 census data indicate only about half of the jobs in the industry require a college degree, and necessary credentials can be obtained from certificate programs and on-the-job training. This industry also has an employment multiplier effect. For every person employed in a technical position, there are an average of three workers employed in other occupations, leading to a growing diversity of jobs tailored for all education levels. It's important to note that these jobs are of particularly high quality and lead to sustainable, upwardly mobile, and family-sustaining careers. And for all of those reasons, we're here today to thank you for your partnership and your introduction of this bill, which will reinstitute the biotechnology tax credit and will help ensure that New York City remains a desirable and affordable location for biotech startup companies. We're in an increasingly competitive environment to attract and retain biotechnology companies that will create high-quality jobs, invest in innovation, and advance the sector into the future. With the reinstatement of this modest tax incentive, we believe that we will prevent the loss of these businesses to neighboring cities, states, and regions. This credit directly confronts the unique challenges that life sciences companies face. With the creation of our Life Sciences Advisory Council, which is composed of academic, industry, venture, and philanthropic leaders, as well as our Real Estate Life Sciences Advisory Board, we've heard directly from the industry about the difficulties startups face. These challenges include the high upfront investment needed for research and development, the complicated funding environment that early-stage biotech companies face, lengthy clinical development processes, and the cost of life sciences incubator and research facility space, which all make it exceedingly difficult, in some cases potentially impossible, for biotech companies to get off the ground in our city. The governor included the renewal of the New York City biotechnology tax credit from 2023 to 2026 in her executive budget this year, which was adopted by the New York State Senate and Assembly. With the council's adoption of this legislation, the city will provide a tax credit for part of the costs connected with research and development and certain costs connected with emerging technology industries. The proposed legislation also provides credit for qualified research expenses, as well as high-technology training expenses, the latter of which will benefit employees across the city beyond their time at any of those supported companies. It's important to note that the previous iteration of the biotechnology tax credit, which existed between 2010 to 2018, was successful in attracting and retaining biotech startups. There was high demand, and the program provided a median benefit of between $62,000 to $72,000 to the approximately 30 businesses that received the credit each year. Multiple companies that received the benefit have remarked that it was helpful, aiding them in building operations and training staff. For example, one company that utilized the previous iteration of the credit was Cresslon. With the support of the biotechnology tax credit, Cresslon was able to expand their labs and manufacturing facilities at Industry City in Brooklyn, grow their workforce to 60 employees, and recently received FDA authorization for a significant pharmaceutical product. Additionally, the proposed credit is specifically tailored to small startup companies that desperately need support to start and stay in New York City. The legislation provides benefits to companies that have sales of $10 million or less and fewer than 100 employees, at least 75% of whom must be employed in New York City. Furthermore, given that the tax credit has an annual cap of $3 million, it represents a relatively modest investment by the city in startups in which have immense economic potential and the likelihood of making an economic contribution to the city that far exceeds the amount they'd receive through this credit. We appreciate the opportunity to testify today in support of Introduction 1070 and strongly urge the council to pass this legislation. This bill will help achieve the city's goal of creating an additional 20,000 high-quality jobs in the next 10 to 15 years and help the life sciences industry in New York City continue on its rapid-growth trajectory, cementing our city as a national leader in this field. We greatly appreciate the council's work and collaboration so far, and we look forward to answering any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. We've also been joined by my colleagues on Zoom, Councilmember Williams, and here with us in person, Councilmembers Farias and Sanchez. I understand that the general goal of the credit is to support the biotech industry and help it grow. That's a bit of a vague goal. Could you be more specific about how the credit is supposed to work? And if it's costing us an average of, say, $3 million a year, how much does the city estimate we're getting back for our investment exponentially?
So I'm going to start to answer a question, then I welcome for the details of the tax credit methodology or mechanisms. I'm going to welcome my colleague from the Department of Finance to comment if she can. So, you know, we've measured the economic impact of biotech in New York City per year, and it's about $5 billion. And we want to grow that so that over the next 10 to 15 years, we'll achieve over $80 billion of economic impact. And this investment, what we saw from while it was instated before, was that on average, companies yielded a benefit of somewhere between $62,000 to $72,000 per year. Actually, I'm not sure if that's per year, it might be total, I'll have to get back to you on that. And so if you think about it, I'll use Cresslon as the example. They used to have a handful of employees, and now they've grown to 60 employees, and they've taken space, expanded their space in Industry City. That multiplier effect of the impact of both their growth, as well as the growth within Industry City and the resulting growth in that neighborhood, is a great example of how a modest investment in that company with that tax credit can then reverbe to the broader economy around it in that neighborhood. And so we anticipate that happening across the city, and over the course of the next 10 to 15 years, we hope to grow again from 20,000 to 40,000 jobs. And we need to do that, working with those startups from the very beginning.
I guess, go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's actually beyond the purview of the Department of Finance to discuss the economic impact, so I think we would already come.
Okay.
I guess to play devil's advocate, we haven't had this tax credit in a couple of years. Have you seen less biotech firms doing business here?
So, it's on. I actually would like to share that we've had many companies tell us that they are considering leaving New York City because of the incentives of competing markets in our region. And so on the one hand, we've been able to retain companies like Cresslon through the use of this credit. On the other hand, we see companies, there was a company recently called Epibone that announced they're moving to New Jersey because of the competing incentives.
What's the competitive incentives in New Jersey?
They have a variety of different tax programs and tax credits as well. They also have other use of net operating losses and other programs that provide economic benefits to companies.
And how do we best track if the programs are working? Do you have any thoughts on how a future evaluation might begin to measure the behavioral and economic impact of a tax break itself?
It's such a great question and something that's at the heart of what we're doing now within the broader life sciences program, and most of EDC, as a matter of fact, in terms of tracking all of our metrics, making sure that when we put programs in place, we're seeing the data that shows how many companies are taking advantage of it, what their growth trajectories are, how many employees they grow to. And so we will be monitoring that over time.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think those are obvious. I mean, in a time like this, when you're talking about, the administration's talking about another three rounds of 5% pegs, figuring out, you know, the exponential value of these tax breaks just makes our work a lot easier. And what data do you think you'd need to undertake an evaluation like that?
Well, we certainly need the data on how many have been using or would use that program. And we scan the market on a quarterly basis to look for how many companies exist in New York. And we have an objective to reach over 1,000 of those R&amp;D innovation companies, and we're about halfway there. But in order for us to continue to achieve that, we need to track the data of how many companies, how many employees, what the use of the tax credit will be, and then what the outcome may be. And then unfortunately, we also have to track whether we continue to lose companies to other areas around us.
But do you feel that this tax break is competitive enough? I mean, it sounds like New Jersey is still eating our lunch with this stuff.
Well, it is very meaningful to the startup community. What they've actually asked us continually over, since it's been taken down, since the beginning of 2019, they've asked if it can be reinstated. And so we know from what they've told us that they struggle in the early days of financing their companies and that every dollar counts, and something like this modest amount of support is very meaningful to them for staying in New York City. And we also work with Empire State Development, as well as our community across life sciences to provide support for every company that's looking to grow in New York City. So combine that with the financial support of a tax credit like this, and I think this helps us be competitive.
Yeah, I think the more information you can give us, the better. I think sometimes, people often cite the number of tax breaks that are issued as a sign of, you know, if a program is effective. But I think understanding, having a deeper understanding of the exponential value of what it brings back is actually more helpful, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I have one other question. Oh, another thing, as far as with our friends in New Jersey, do you hear as space is a concern at all?
So, space has always been a concern, and it's a great question. We are hoping to put in place several clusters across New York City, starting with, I mentioned the Science Park and Research Campus in Kips Bay. We've also invested in Kips Bay more broadly to create the Alexandria Center for Life Sciences, Deerfield's Cure, as well as spaces on the West Side and in Long Island City and on the Brooklyn waterfront. And so right now, we have about 3.5 million square feet of life sciences spaces in New York City that is currently live, active, and either tenanted or tenenting. We do think that there's competition for space, and that that's a really important foundational piece of infrastructure that we need for the city to attract and retain companies here. If you look back 10, 15 years ago, we lost companies from New York City because there weren't enough spaces. And so part of our investment for LifeSci NYC is to make sure we're building the most compelling spaces, thinking to being a tech-forward life sciences community in New York City, and attracting businesses and talent to those clusters.
What, not to confuse this committee with the land use committee, but what is the typical zoning requirements that are needed for, is it a laboratory setting, is it office settings?
There are zoning settings for laboratory and manufacturing environments. I will admit, I'm not a zoning expert, and so I know there are C and M zones. I would need to go back to our zoning colleagues.
I'm just thinking as far as, you know, we have an abundance of vacant office space right now, so I don't know if there's a way we can get creative there.
Well, it's a great point, and in fact, that's what we did with Deerfield's Cure. So Deerfield purchased that building and then converted it to Wet Labs with incentives through our New York City IDA program. And so that is now up and running, almost fully tenanted, has great companies like Lexio Therapeutics, Aprotura, is employing hundreds of New Yorkers as we speak, and houses two or three incubators in the space that are live now. So it's a great point that we're constantly working with the developer community to think about, are there ways that we can build the spaces that are needed? To your point about zoning, some of that is not feasible from a zoning perspective, but where it is, we're very welcoming for it.
Have they tried to incorporate any of this into the mayor's City of Yes plan?
Yes, absolutely, and that should be in the works as we speak.
Okay. A last question for me is about refundable credits. Most economic development tax credits simply reduce tax liabilities, but rarely are they refundable. This feature is typically found in poverty alleviation tax programs like EITC and not economic development tax breaks. So do you think the refundability is a useful feature of this tax break?
I'm actually going to defer that to my Department of Finance colleague.
It's not, the department's purview is to talk about effectiveness of the refundability.
I think we would have to go back and look into that a little bit more.
Okay. Well, DOF can answer it, then you guys can answer it?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, Councilmember, we're happy to get back to you on the effectiveness of the refundability aspect.
I don't think that we have data with us right now on refundability, but we can certainly
follow up with you.
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful. I have questions from my colleagues. Yeah, Councilmember Farias.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I just wanted, a lot of what I'm hearing here today about the tax credit particularly reminds me of the same thing that we're seeing earlier in the year with the TV film production industry and pushing and encouraging the state to have a tax credit that's comparable and at least competitive to our neighboring states. So I appreciate you folks honing in on that and raising that to us, so we know that we definitely have competitors out there that we have to maintain to at least keep businesses here. I wanted to talk a little bit about the part of the credit for job training, and just kind of, if I can get an idea, if we know for the businesses that we've seen here already in New York City, what is the types of, like, job training and job retention that we see of the employees and employers staying in New York, for example, or staying with companies for longevity? Just so I can kind of get an idea of what that investment looks like for the tax credit, and if we're retaining those employees or those staff members here in the city.
Sure. One of our, thank you, Councilmember Farias, for your question. It's the most important part of what we do, right, is creating those job opportunities, creating those training opportunities for New Yorkers. It's at the core of every project that we ask, how are we doing that? And I'll give one, I'll draw on the example I gave earlier from Cresslon, but expand on that to the broader use of the program. Cresslon is a great host of our LifeSci internship program. They take interns from CUNY and from other schools across the city, and actually, they've been hiring those interns full-time. And so that's a really great example where a student gets their first experience in life sciences, that adds to their resume, and then they may stay in that experience. About 40% of our interns extend on or become full-time hires for the companies that they go to their internship for. And so that LifeSci internship program, we've had over 750 interns across, I think, 180 companies across New York City, and of those companies, many of them use this biotechnology tax credit and then participated in the program in parallel. And so that's one great example. In addition to that, as staff are coming into companies, they go through various different training, apprenticeship, and growth programs in those companies, and we see that not only do they benefit in growth in those companies, but if they move on to another role, they've gotten that training in their history.
Okay, great. And I've been able to go to some of the LifeSci stuff that EDC invites me to, so I've seen it in action, I think it's wonderful. And then just quickly on adequate space, I know it's something that we've been consistently battling with trying to convert spaces. I know even with my manufacturing bill, we're looking at how do we look at some of our manufacturing zones and making sure that we are creating the adequate space that's needed to compete and to encourage more businesses to come here in New York City. But just trying to get a better idea, I know you somewhat answered it for the chair, how are we, in working with the mayor's City of Yes and zoning tax amendments, do you think in five years, 10 years, 20 years, we will be in a good enough place if those amendments were to pass, to be competitive with how other cities that are not as old as us particularly can, you know, and don't have the zoning requirements that we have or limitations that we currently have? Will we be able to compete and retain as many businesses or encourage more folks to stay here?
Sure. First off, thank you for coming to our events. I think it's really wonderful, and everybody is welcome to come to those anytime you'd like. We want everybody's active participation. It takes a village to grow this industry. And so to your question about spaces, we are so excited to be building this across the city, and we have set a goal for ourselves to build over 10 million square feet over the next 10 to 15 years. I mentioned earlier that we're at 3.5 million. We have visibility to projects coming online that are between 6 to 7 million square feet, so we have a little bit of work left to do. And within that, we want to make sure the spaces that are created are the most compelling and future-forward for the growth of life sciences in New York. So, for example, we've put in place Biolabs at NYU Langone on Barack Street. That is an incubator that houses up to 35 companies at a time and has tech-forward capabilities to make sure that as the advances in technology continue alongside biology, that we are welcoming the most cutting-edge companies coming out of our institutions, whether that be CUNY or Columbia or NYU or Rockefeller or Einstein, I could go on and on. And so those incubators are crucial. We are also looking to put in place the different types of growth spaces from those incubators so that companies can then grow from then on. So I mentioned Deerfield's Cure earlier. We've also invested in Innolabs in Long Island City, which is a vertical campus for life sciences as well. We have BioBat on the Brooklyn waterfront, and we're working with the Navy Yard on spaces as well. And so we see a combination of working with the private developer community, as well as our real estate board and our Life Sciences Advisory Council, to make sure those spaces are available and online. And in particular, thinking, you mentioned manufacturing, we see some of that happening at the Navy Yard already. We also are working with developers to consider other spaces across the city for that as well.
And just a tiny follow-up, can you, and I think this is what I heard, can you just reiterate, like, revenue generation numbers or projections that we could potentially see? I think that's something the chair asked a little bit earlier, but I missed the numbers.
Do you mean the resulting?
Like, resulting revenue that we're anticipating from the tax credit, like, coming back to New York City?
Sure. So we know that on average, on every year, there's about $5 billion of economic impact from.
5B billion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, from the life sciences industry in New York City. We'd like to grow that and forecast over $80 billion of economic impact over the next 10 to 15 years.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Joining me by Councilmember Brewer, before I turn to other colleagues, can you provide us with, not right now, but as a follow-up, a breakdown and a full rundown of the Jersey tax credits for this sector?
We can follow up on that for sure.
Okay. Do we have other questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Sanchez.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Good to see you, EDC. Hi, Mikel. So I have a technical question and then two longer questions. So I think this is following up to Chair Brannan's questions around just understanding the value that we're getting. Has EDC or Department of Finance done a cost per job? So you mentioned 20,000 jobs are estimated to come from this investment, over what time period?
Oh, there are 20,000 jobs employed now, and we're hoping to double that, and.
In what time period?
So double that at any point in time over the course of the, so in 10 years, we expect to see at least 40,000 jobs at that point, at any given point in time.
Okay, and so if you had to estimate the cost per jobs, like, benefit per job that we're seeing?
I think I'd have to come back to you on that math. I think I'd have to come back to you on that math.
Another, another just clarifying question, there is a proration if more credits are applied for than $3 million. Have we seen companies applying for more than the $3 million that we are capped at? Have been capped at?
Ziying, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, as you stated, if the funding is insufficient, the $3 million has to be prorated. And there are incidents where the cap was hit, and then finance had a mechanism to prorate the funding.
So that means that a company is getting less than what they're eligible for?
Generally, it's lower than the individual credit cap.
Okay, thank you. And so, the, the other question is, you know, I, I represent, like Councilmember Farias, I represent the, the West Bronx, very low-income community, and, you know, the, the housing crisis is just, not just because I'm Chair of Housing and Buildings, but it's just always in the front of our minds in, in the city of New York. So can you help us understand what steps, if any, has EDC taken, has the city taken to make sure that we're hiring New York City residents in particular, not necessarily having folks coming from outside and, you know, joining in the, the housing pressure that we have in New York City?
So I'll start with some of the training programs we have, and then I'm going to ask my colleague Mikel to share more on the housing elements. So I mentioned our internship program before as part of our training programs to bring New York City students into life sciences industry. That, that program has been incredibly successful with, again, over 750 students in the internship program over the past six years. In addition to that, we recently announced and have started working with Biobus in, and expanding their capabilities in the Bronx for K-12 STEM training for students to have hands-on laboratory experiences. They come into the bus and they, there's literally a working lab in the bus at.
It's parked right outside my house, I know.
Yeah, it's, it's fantastic. And so, that's, we're, we're hoping to do more and more of these activities over time. And by nature of these clusters building together, the talent tends to want to work, live, play in the areas of the clusters that are emerging. And so, we anticipate by building a cluster, we actually have one that we're building in Morris Park in the Bronx with our partners at Einstein Montefiore, that, that will attract and retain people to those jobs in that, in that area.
Quick, one, one more quick one. Thank you, thank you for that on the training. Have any of these firms that have been receiving or have received in the past the biotech tax credit, have they layered it on with other credits like ICAP?
So I don't know the answer to that. We'd have to look into that further. I don't know if the Department of Finance colleague is aware.
No, we don't have the information. We may not be, be able to disclose anything due to test secrecy law. And I do wonder, as something about to the previous question.
We, we need, you don't have to tell us who got what, but we do need to know if folks are layering these credits.
It's not within the purview of Department of Finance to take care of this, and we don't have the data, and we may not be able to release it due to test secrecy law.
Okay, we'll, we'll follow up. That doesn't sound right to me.
Okay, and then, Mikel, do you want to address the question about housing?
Sure, yeah. Councilmember, thank you for the question. I think one thing to highlight from the testimony is that for the eligibility of this particular tax credit, not only does the company have to have fewer than 100 employees, but 75% of them have to be New York City residents. And so, I think that's a, a really important factor of this to ensure that not only are we employing New Yorkers, but that we're ensuring that the benefit is focused on companies that are targeted, like doing actual engagement, training, and so on with New Yorkers. And I, I see that Councilmember Powers has joined, and so I would be remiss if I didn't highlight our partnership with him on the Spark Kips Bay campus, which I think is a really good example about how to create a pipeline for New Yorkers into these jobs. So that campus will, you know, include public high schools, CUNY schools, city agencies, but also private life sciences space. And so, you can think of, you know, a high schooler that's interested in working in biotech industry in the future, really having a clear pipeline into that field in the same space that we're building and investing in.
Well, and if I could add to that, there's, there will also be a Health and Hospitals Ambulatory Care Simulation Center. You can think of the simulation center with access to those high school and CUNY students as, as part of their training, which is just, the synergy of that really is exciting.
Thank you.
Joined by Councilmember Powers, and we have questions from Councilmember Powers, followed by Brewer.
Thank you, nice to see you, and appreciate the shout-out to Spark Kips Bay, a project that we are in full engagement on right now. Believe I'm leaving here after this to go do another engagement. So I was looking at the testimony here, and I, I recognize that the tax credit being offered is for smaller, or maybe medium-sized, but smaller, newer startup types in the industry to provide them a boost to get into this industry. And I think without question, this is an area where New York City has a big opportunity to, you know, squash other cities when it comes to growing this industry. I have the Alexandria, my district, Spark ahead. The three, it's $3 million, I think, being offered right now, capped out. And I'm sorry if this was asked already, are there, is there a need higher than $3 million right now? You know, if you, from the sort of looking at the eligible businesses here, what is the total need that you guys see beyond, is it 3 million or is it beyond that? Because it looks like the 3 million's being, being spent today.
Thank you, Councilmember Powers, and thank you for all of your support on Spark and the various initiatives for life sciences. So we recognize that the tax credit that we're asking for is $3 million, is meant to be a modest request amidst the broader city budget during a time that we know the city is, is facing some challenges. Some, as, as.
Many.
Born and bred New Yorker, I, I take a lot of pride in all of this. You know, we have visibility to putting in place at least 10 incubators across the city. Those 10 incubators may each house 20, 30 companies, and the tax credit in the past had supported 30 companies per year. I could see a world in which we may need more than that, but I also want to be respectful in, in what we're asking for and keep to, at, at least let's start here, and then if we do need to expand beyond that, we should come back to the drawing board.
Got it. But you do, you do think there's a need greater than the 3 million?
Yeah, especially the funding environment for startups is pretty challenging right now. I think everybody, it's challenging across the board, whether for life sciences or even broader investment and funding. And so, but in particular for the startup community, what we don't want to happen is a startup to fail because they just needed a little more support. And, and we also don't want a startup to leave because they needed a little more support and they got it from somewhere else. And so, what, what we see is that startups really struggle in that, we call it the valley of death in research and development, where it's post-NIH funding, it's pre-venture funding, and we need to help them leap across that valley with a little bit of, of government support so that they can become that next Moderna, they can become that next Pfizer. But they won't be able to do that if they don't have a, a number of different support mechanisms, especially during the financing climate that we're facing.
Got it. Well, there's one more question, and my time is up. But, you know, I do, I do think there might be a need greater, and I think it's worth the conversation because we are in a challenging environment, although these are things that have the opportunity to help our, grow our economy over the next X years. And there might be, that, that exact scenario you're outlining is going to exist for some, if it exists, up to 3 million, it might exist beyond that as well. I saw that the eligibility criteria allows a look-back period, I think back to 2020, I believe it is. Can you just explain that? You know, there's obviously some of these, that, that scenario you're laying out where there's that bridge between venture capital and NIH public funding, they probably have crossed, or started to cross that bridge already over the last three years, maybe not because of COVID and the pandemic, you know, slowdown, shutdown. So I just want to hear why, you know, the justification, because we're obviously eating up then resources for ones that are looking for it in the present and, and now, who maybe ever, and allocating it to folks who have already crossed an important moment or hurdle. So understanding that we have finite resources here, I want to just better understand the three-year look-back period for folks that are, that made it through that or, or making it through that.
Sure, thank you. And I'll start with the unfortunate scenario that over the past few years, as funding has become more challenging, even companies that have made it to their Series A or may have made it to 30 employees or 50 employees, they are managing their runway now very carefully. And the good news is, I think that's a healthy management of their runway. I think that means that really great science will progress forward because they will be able to do that, hopefully, but it's in jeopardy. So even that, those companies that have made it over the past couple of years may be facing challenge in this environment today that's different than it was three, four years ago. But for the look-back, I would welcome Ziying, if you, if you would comment on that. Thank you.
I don't think, it's within the Department of Finance to talk about why the credit laps. And I think you cover most of the material.
Okay.
Hey, we got a swear. Make sure you're illegal. Do you affirm that your testimony will be truthful to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief, and that you will respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do. All right, so my name is Ken Grace. I am the Director of Governmental Affairs at the New York City Department of Finance, and I'll answer the question you just asked.
Yes, the question was, the eligibility criteria isn't just moving forward, it allows for a three-year retroactive look-back for folks that can take advantage of the credit. And I guess my question is trying to understand that, it's not, no one's arguing that 2020, 2021, we're not different years than ordinary, but I think that understanding that there's only $3 million here to play with, and some folks who need that money probably more urgently or more immediately than others, maybe not, understanding that three-year period, because there's been, I bring this up because there's been other tax programs in the past where folks have tried to get retroactive look-backs, and they've been told no because they have completed certain steps in the process of that, where that funding would otherwise be helpful to them. And so, it, it's eating up, potentially eating up resources for other folks that are going to need that.
So I'll start with the $3 million question. So when this bill, or when this tax credit sunset in 2018, we don't really have a lot of information on why it sunset, it was a while ago. I know this year, when, when the city was looking for like new ways to attract businesses, this was something that, that they looked at, and we, it passed at the state level. And I, you know, why we're here today is to try to, you know, opt into that, into that. So from our perspective, we saw that it was a $3 million tax credit, and we didn't have any data to show why it would, why it should grow or not. We do know that the $3 million, it was absorbed by about 28 to 34 companies, generally between like 2015 and 2018. So we really kind of want to see it moving forward now because 2018 was a while ago, and who knows what the, what the landscape will be for these types of businesses. So having said that, as far as a criteria goes, so the, this credit has very strict requirements. So first of all, anyone that, the only people that are going to get this are folks that are eligible, and it's part of that $3 million pie. So companies must have 100 full-time employees or fewer. There needs to be at least 75% of those employees working in New York City, and the gross revenues cannot exceed 20 million in the preceding year. They also must have a ratio of research and development funds to net sales, which equals or exceeds 6%. So it's very strict criteria in order to get this.
And, and if I could add one other point, if there is a company, first off, I think most companies at that startup stage need as much help as they can get. That said, if it's a company that is starting to hit that 50 employment number, they are going to be a ripe target from the region around us. And we see, as we, we brought up New Jersey earlier, this is a way that we can go to bat to keep these jobs in New York City.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We've also been joined by Councilmember Ose on Zoom, and now we have questions from Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. I do want to give a shout-out to Richard Robbins Program, which, and I was wondering how it fits into what you're talking about. Obviously, it attracts New Yorkers, it attracts CUNY students, and I think it does, but I'd like to hear it from you because I'm such a supporter of that program.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Brewer, and thank you for supporting our LifeSci internship program led by Upper West Strategies, that, that worked, and Rich Robbins at the helm of that. It's an incredible program. It has had, we just reached in the, in the past few weeks, our 750th intern, and we've had interns hosted at over 180 companies across the city. Many of the companies that use this biotechnology tax credit take interns, and I, I shared the example of Kresalon earlier. We know many.
I listened to it.
Oh, great. So, you know, these, this is the, the vital part of our program that is helping to launch those careers in life sciences with CUNY and the other institutions across the city. So it is a vital part and directly tied to this program.
Second, do we try to steal firms from other places?
We welcome and look to attract.
Welcome, whatever.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we do that?
I think that's a great question, Councilmember. I, I wouldn't characterize the word as steal, but we do have, we do have at the partnerships team at EDC, a very aggressive business development program where we do talk about all of the benefits of bringing businesses here to New York.
Have you been successful in doing?
Yes, our business development team works closely with not just chambers of commerce in terms of identifying space, but also highlighting all of the reasons why New York City is so critical for the life sciences industry. Our talent pool, the number of academic institutions and universities that we have, the fact that, you know, for every technical life science position, there are three other types of roles that are needed, whether it's administration, or HR, or custodial. All of that is so important, just given our size, given our public transportation system, given the fact that we are investing in clusters of innovation in life sciences space. So we do have a lot of targeted conversations with businesses that are looking to move, and we see really attracting and retaining as being a key part, not just of the business development program, but also life.
Do we have a marketing budget for that?
We do market. We use, whether it's website, paid ads, going to conferences, working closely with real estate firms that support those types of businesses as they're looking for space. So we can certainly follow up with you on more information about that team.
Okay. And then, the academics, so obviously you market and let the companies that are eligible know about the tax credit, but how do you do that with some of the universities? So that CUNY, Columbia, obviously, I'm familiar with Janus, and that's my other question. Are they able to be filled up? Is that a space that we're still working on? And just generally, because a lot of these startups start at, you know, at the City College or whatever, and, and how are we marketing to them? That's my other question.
Couple of great questions in there. I'm going to try to break it, break it up one by one. So we work very closely with the institutions and with many of the different industry sector stakeholders on our programs, and so I'll share a couple of examples. We have our Life Sciences Advisory Council, which is comprised of members from Columbia, from CUNY.
I heard it on here.
Yeah, and then we also have our Real Estate Life Sciences Advisory Board, which I mentioned earlier as well. We also meet with the tech transfer offices very regularly to talk to our partners at CUNY, our partners at Einstein, our partners at Columbia and Rockefeller and NYU about the innovation that they're working on with their principal investigators in their research units. And so, we meet with them to make sure they know of what we're doing. We also invest in innovation with them. So for example, we are expanding the New York Stem Cell Foundation to make sure that their capabilities are available to the businesses and the startups of New York, and to make sure that we support their innovation and growing and starting new companies directly. The same, we're, we're investing with Einstein Montefiore up in the Bronx to build a pilot site for biologics and cell therapies and, and production of those, those incubated products. And so, we work very closely with the institutions on those innovation programs, as well as making sure the internship program is reaching their students, making sure that our programming is, is reaching their students as well. And now I've forgotten your other question.
Janus.
So Janus, we're actually working very closely with Janus and the team at CCNY. No, they're not filled at this point. They're, they have three different sites in that cluster in West Harlem. I know the, the Mink Building houses a company called Velstra. It's a really great company that came out of Wall Cornell and, and also went to J-Labs, one of the incubators in New York, and then moved to West Harlem. They've also, they're working on the expansion of Harlem BioSpace as well.
Are you helping them to fill up?
Yes, we're in, in constant discussion with, with Scott and, and the Janus team.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Okay. Seeing none, thank you, EDC, thank you, DOF, and we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, everyone.
This hearing is adjourned.